This is what we call.
President.
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 Thank you. Our mission statement. Our mission is the primary source of public education in the community is to meet the unique educational needs of our diverse population by providing a comprehensive quality education for the students of the Port Arthur Independent School District. At this time, we will now canvass the election results for the election held on May 6th. Consider and if appropriate, do we canvass trust the election of the Board of Trustees election held on May 6th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Madam President, I make most, my make motion to move to approve the election canvas.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The election results are approved. At this time, we will proceed with the election proceedings. You will raise your right hand or the p after me. Say aye or say no. I want you to state your names. Aye. State your name.
I, Kenneth Lofton, I say aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the.
Board trustee.
Board of trustee.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the base of my ability.
To the base of my ability.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And let's welcome our new trustees. Next item on the agenda is the reorganization of the board. Before we begin with those proceedings, I would like to say thank you to my fellow trustees for allowing me the opportunity to next serve as president of this board. And thank you to the citizens of the Port Arthur Independent School District and the city of Port Arthur. It's been my pleasure to serve you. Thank you. At this time, we will now reorganize the board. Dr. Porter.
Thank you. At this time, all offices are vacated pursuant to policy DDAA local. The board has decided to rotate offices. Is that the desire of the board?
Yes.
No.
Could you explain the rotation of what?
The rotation of offices where we would vote for the president, vice president, and secretary. It is my understanding that the board decided to go for a rotation this, this year. And the vice president would become president, the, and the secretary would become vice president, and they would, the you all would nominate the secretary. Is that the will of the public voting?
No sir.
Okay, let's take a, okay, we'll take a roll call vote. This is, please, please take a roll call vote.
Let's see my roles.
Yes.
Yes.
Let's see Martin.
Yes.
Let's see get voted.
No.
Let's see Martin.
Yes.
Let's see Martin.
No.
Yes. At this time, the ayes have it. We will do a ro, a rotation of the board. Therefore, president for this year would be Mr. Brandon Barti, vice president would be Mr. Kenneth Lofton. Therefore, offices of the president and vice president will be rotated in succession. The president, once again, will be Brandon Barti, vice president Kenneth Lofton. We will now entertain a motion for the office of secretary. May I have a motion?
Make a motion and now make this a lot of calls.
A motion is on the floor for Ms. Whitehoff Johnson for secretary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All with votes. Mrs. Johnson, you are secretary for the 10th and 24th school year. Congratulations to all of you. At this time, I'm going to go to President Barti.
At this time, we're going to a five-minute procession. You want to say something?
No, this ain't it. Okay, let's do a 30-minute procession. Okay, let's do a 30-minute procession. So, we will remain, uh, remain back to the closed session at 6:10.
Okay. Close meeting. Under the authority of the Texas government code section 551.071 and 551.074, the board will convene closed meeting to settle with attorney regarding opinion on postpaid litigation, including settlement of office and other legal matters which duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas dispair rule of professional conduct of state or protectors are cleared or covered by attorney client privilege. Consider personnel reorganization Texas government code section 551.074 as follows. Consider it inappropriate to approve one of our teachers. Consider it inappropriate to approve principal for Port Arthur High School. Consider it inappropriate to approve assistant principal for Thomas Jefferson Village School. The board will now convene closed meeting at 6:30? Is that all? At 7 o'clock, sorry, at 7 o'clock. 6:15. Yes.
And I need to be here tonight. And we're always happy to see our students. They look absolutely wonderful tonight. We walked in, they were quiet, and they, they looked great. We have Dan here, we have Wilson Early College tutorial students, that's what I call them. And they have done a, I can't find the job they have done this year. What started with them, our tutorial students, uh, who helped our kids in elementary. When we designed the program, I must say we never would have dreamed that it would be such a success. But we should have, because we do have the best and the brightest here. For all of you for what you have done, I will ask someone from Wilson to come and just talk about the program and what did, what our students did. And then, of course, to one of our parents, please acknowledge our parents, because, I mean, we have to, uh, parents, please stand. Our parents, our parents, please stand. That's true. I tell you, any, uh, say this before you start. Parents, thank you for creating beautiful, wonderful, smart, intelligent, nice. They talk to you, they look at you, they shake your hands, they're polite. Now, I don't know what they do at home. But to us, they were absolutely magnificent. So, thank you, parents. I'm telling you, thank you. If we could keep them another year, we would. Keep that teeth.
Vivian, the other one.
Uh, thank you so much for this opportunity, Dr. Porter. Um, to our world president, Brandon Barti, to our trustees, and of course, Dr. Porter, our superintendent. Uh, I just want to again express my appreciation for the opportunity for our students to be able to go into the elementary emphasis and have this hands-on experience. Uh, the leadership of Dr. Porter along with your support made this a reality for our children. And you will hear from them one this evening in terms of how this opportunity has actually allowed them to glean and to have more self-realization in terms of what they're going to do futuristically speaking. And so, you'll be able to hear from some of our senior leaders. We have quite a few, possibly 26 or so students participate in this effort. But we will have three students representing on this evening that will actually give you that firsthand view of what they encountered and the experience, how beneficial it was to them. So again, I thank you all for your support and to Dr. Porter for your leadership. Thank you. With me is a Selonda Avery. She's our student success instructor, and she has worked very closely with our students. So I definitely want to ask at this time that she would like to extend greetings and provide introduction to our students.
It has been a joy. And thank you all, board, for allowing us to have them. It has been an idea that went from being a reality, but guess what? Our students made it flourish. And that's what it's all about. So I want to have three of our students come up right now and give their testimony. And, um, one of the students, first of all, stand up. Our A and R, please stand if you don't mind. Damian, America, and Caitlin. Damian Brockton II, America Virgin, and Caitlin DeSells. They are going to give their testimony at campus, but there are so many stories to tell. On the way back from senior, uh, senior trip today, I was listening to some of our students talk about their students, and they're like, "Ooh, I learned so much. Ooh," and I thought somebody had a blow. That's how much I learned. They taught me a lot. Here's Damian.
Hello, thank you to the board. I'd like to, first of all, extend a wonderful thank you for this opportunity. It's something that, of course, not many people get to do, and of course, I never would have thought. Um, at 18 years old, I'd be on my home elementary campus teaching. So that's what we do. Let's say that I thank you all for that opportunity. Um, firstly, I was working at the Queen Elementary. Like I said before, that was my home school. That's where I first started at PISD. So it was a big reminder from where I came from for elementary. Something that I had to get used to was already home to me. So being at the campus where I came from, it was a reminder of where I started and to also advocate for the children that they can always be in my position. Um, I started working under Michelle Rainey, our fourth grade ESL chair, and I started off with small tutoring groups. She first gave me a starting curriculum to give them, and when she saw that I could kind of work my own way around it, she gave me my own use to give them worksheets that I created, a little fun opportunities. And of course, this motivated me in my career when I'm matriculate to be a lawyer and a politician, which I'll be studying for at University of Texas at Austin next fall. Absolutely helped me with my critical thinking. Um, coming up with those activities, I had to realize what was the need for them and also what was their wants. Because, you know, working with younger children, it's kind of a little harder to help them understand their responsibilities and that those grades get shown to mom and dad when they go home. So I had to find a funner way to kind of incorporate those strategies and all those things for the start. And we started to see numerous amounts of improvement throughout my students. And also, my second skill, surprisingly, I had a little bit of a Spanish background from Wilson Early College. Um, we had a wonderful Spanish teacher. And with me being placed under the ESL chair, of course, I had to utilize those skills. And I absolutely had the opportunity of working with Nicaraguan kids, so they had no English background. So I had that opportunity to try to learn my skills and then also use them on the floor. And I was also a representation for our students that have English as a second language, that other people are also doing this, because of course, Spanish is my first language. So being able to speak to them and show them that I'm learning as well as they are, it kind of, um, started a bond for us that they couldn't get from somebody else because they actively saw me learning. And I tell them, sometimes y'all are smarter than me, only in Spanish though. So once again, I just thank you all for the opportunity. I wouldn't have given it up for the world. I absolutely thank you for trusting our student body to be able to fulfill this duty. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Caitlin DeSells. The campus that I was assigned to was Booker T. Washington Elementary School, and that's the campus where I've been sub-tuning for the past eight months. Um, originally, I did not want to go to Booker T. because, as David mentioned, that was his home campus. But for me, it wasn't the same experience as home, because I grew up in that same environment that those kids grew up in. So it wasn't something to look forward to going back to. However, this opportunity was greater than I could ever imagine. Um, the campus that I was assigned to, it came back, going into it with a totally different atmosphere and mindset as from a young student to now a mentor or a sub-tutor, as we're labeled. Um, this environment was totally different. My temporary job turned into my main career focus after my first week. This job helped me to fine-tune a plethora of skills. For example, leadership, communication, creativity, management, and emotional intelligence. The one I would carry with me forever could be, well, the one I would carry with me forever would be learning to appreciate teamwork. This job helped me to see the importance of working together with the teachers, the principals, students, and the parents for a fruitful school and overall society. In the fall, I would be attending Lamar University and returning to Washington as eighth. This experience was more than a job to me. And in my experience, it was a shift in the right direction. This job and the territory it came with made me decide to become an elementary school teacher. For that, I would like to take the time to thank everyone who gave me this opportunity, which is all of you. And, yeah, thank you for allowing me to be a guide and light to the same children with the same background that I come from.
Good evening, Port Arthur ISD school board. My name is America Virgin, and I have the privilege and honor of being one of the senior sub-tutors. This fall, I'm then attending Lamar University and majoring in human resource management. This opportunity gave me plenty of skills that could easily transfer to my career path. I learned adaptability by completing any task given to me. I learned patience by explaining to the kids how to do their work and how to do it thoroughly and comprehend the lesson. I also learned leadership skills. Leadership is what I will need as HR. I would have the role of leader, and this opportunity gave me the chance by allowing me to manage several classrooms filled with distinct personalities. In all honesty, I never thought of myself as someone who'd get attached to the job, much less the children. But I have been a substitute to all grade levels, pre-k through fifth grade. And initially, I asked myself if I was capable of making an impact on the lives of the children. But last Friday, the Wilson students and I graduated Lamar State College Port Arthur there. And I was surprised to see all of my students standing in the stand, sitting in the stands cheering me on. The Monday after I came to work and the kids embraced me in a hug, a little girl ran up to me and she said, "Miss America, I saw you graduate last Friday. That's so cool. I want to be like you one day." On the verge of tears, I told her, I told her, "Of course you will. Anyone can be." Those kids were impacted, and I couldn't believe that I had made an impact in at least one of those students' lives. The elementary that I was chosen to go to, Hassan Houston Elementary, the one I went to as a child. I would like to thank everyone who made this opportunity possible. I had the opportunity to work with some of my former elementary teachers. And I cannot tell you how much I appreciate them, because I would not be the person I am today without them. So, thank you. Thank you to Sam Houston's principals, students, and staff. But also, thank you to my fellow coworkers who made it so much more fun. And they're here today while living under a cell. Thank you. This was an unforgettable experience, and I will forever be grateful.
At this time, we have your questions from the board and then from the board.
Um, I don't have a question. I have more so a statement. Um, I am just extremely, extremely proud of each and every one of you. Uh, I had the opportunity of knowing you even before we had this opportunity to see you all blossom. I mean, when we were all in school together at the Early College High School. And I really want to give a big kudos to the district as well, because the Early College was a program that changed not only my life, but to see it continue to blossom and grow into something that I never wanted to imagine it to be. And this is exactly what I was telling you all about when I came back to speak to you after I graduated. Being a team, not having any, any, any guidance or anything like that, going out and taking the opportunity to make someone's else's life better. Someone who was in the district just like you. When I look at Damian, when I look at America, I look at everyone else, there's another Damian Brockton sitting in the classroom right now who was grateful that you came back to Port Arthur to them. So whenever you do leave, you go off, you do great things, never forget home. Always come back. I'm pretty sure we'll still be here doing some innovative things. But with your assistance, we can take our district to the next level. And lastly, America, you said something that was really, really heartfelt and touching to me. Of course you can, anyone can do it. There are children who are looking at you right now saying that, "Wow, one day I can come back and be a teacher while I'm still in school and assist." That was the same thing that gave me the drop to become a school board trustee at 18 years old. So keep up the amazing work. I'm peacock proud of you all, and I can't wait to see what you're doing in the future.
Yeah, I have to echo, uh, Trustee Deadwood. Send us congratulations to you all. We're very proud of you. But I must say, of the three of you that spoke, I know that we have Mr. Whitehouse replacement, we have our ex-attorney, and the lady, she's actually going for Dr. Porter's seat. So congratulations.
Just, uh, Dr. Ronald gave Mrs. Johnson.
Sure. I'm just so honored to be in the presence twice in one day with so many of these scholars. I had the opportunity, a few minutes before the board began, to attend the Rotarian Scholarship Program at the Toasty Yoke Cafe, where I was drifting around. I don't know why you got here, so I'm looking so dry, but it brings a heart. But what a wonderful opportunity to share this time with you. As Dr. Porter and trustees have said, we all like smart. And you guys are so smart, and it shows. So thank you all so much for what you've done. So far in your careers, I'm looking forward to hearing stories about your successes in the future. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I typically don't say too much, but I had to speak today. Um, I just want to say to you individuals that spoke, as well as the remainder of you that have taken advantage of this program and even the Early College, that you have done an amazing job. You are very well spoken, very intelligent and educated. And I'm super proud that you guys are products of PISD. A lot of times, everybody likes to share all of the negative about the district, and they really don't like the positive. But you guys are the amazing positives that our district bring out. And I want you guys to keep going, and y'all just made me super happy. So, I enjoyed your presentations. I enjoyed what I've seen you guys do the whole school year. And you all will go really far, along with quite a few others that are doing the positive things, uh, coming from our district. And I'm super excited about that. And I just wanted you guys to know.
The one thing I got out of all of this is, uh, don't tell us how our kids can achieve in Port Arthur. We have some amazing students here in Port Arthur. And I can't wait till the next year, the next group of kids who's gonna get a chance to, and teach and serve and, you know, you never know what affects a kid's vibe until they put into that situation. I know half of those kids that, the 26, never thought they would actually be in a classroom teaching. I guarantee you, 15, you gonna come back and probably be a teacher right here in Port Arthur somewhere. So I think this program is very, very, uh, good. I think we need to build on it. Hopefully, we can get more than 26 next year. So, when I hear people say that our Port Arthur kids not doing nothing, it's a prime example of our kids, that they're very, very successful. So kudos to you all. And go on and continue striving to be the best.
Like Dr. Chelsea said, they're very excited for what we do. But, Mr. Brock, is that your name, Mr. Brock? Mr. Brock, come here. Don't do something with the objects. Come see. Come around this way.
You want to wear your card.
Dr. Porter, please stand up. And this young man stood up there and talked. I said, "We have found our future superintendent of Port Arthur Independent School District." Well, once again, thank you all. Everybody's done an amazing job. Uh, like, like Vice President Lofton said, we have some great kids here in Port Arthur. We have some great teachers. We have some great programs. And all we have to do is build and build and build. And like, uh, uh, trustee, Secretary Johnson said, we not, a lot of people focus, say things about the negative, but we very, uh, certainly put the positive out there. And we have a lot of positives going on in Port Arthur Independent School District with the leadership of our superintendent. So thank you for all that you do. Uh, Mrs. Baptiste, thank you. Mrs. Avery, thank you. Continue pushing forward. And guess what? We have your back and everything that you do. All we need is to say it. And we, if we can give it to you, you got it. Thank you.
We'll move on. And once again, to our parents and to our students, and I see grandparents and aunts out there. You all are what's right, not only about, not only for PA ISD, but this community. You are what's right with this community. And so, congratulations again. Next, we have the Memorial High School band. We got students from the band, and, uh, we put a lot of, uh, emphasis, and I, and some of you, uh, if you're ten, one or two of you attended, uh, the concert last, this, last weekend at my time there. And it was absolutely terrific. Terrific. It was our first concert. We were all together again, first of all. And, uh, I mean, the parents were excited, the students were excited, they sound good. It was amazing. So congratulations to you. And we put so much more on Mr. Frazier and his team, what we expect for the future. Uh, once again, thanking Board of Trustees for investing in the fine arts, and band is part of that. So Mr. Frazier has his marching artist. We've spent a whole lot of money getting things. So we expect results. We expect the band to grow. We expect the world from the fine arts and band. And please, uh, please, Miss Burt, make sure you introduce our young gentleman here who is a product of Port Arthur, what we said, and graduated in four years and came back, and now he's assistant director.
Good evening. First to our trustees and, obviously, to Dr. Porter, thank you for allowing us to present our awesome students. Uh, I am Dr. Frazier, I'm the director of bands, uh, Port Arthur ISD. And I thank you all for allowing us to come. Uh, we have two of our assistants who are Uh, we have two of our assistants who are both PA ISD graduates. Mr. Manuel Diaz, who was a twenty-eighteen graduate of Memorial High School. And also Mr. Larry Oliver, who was a two thousand seven graduate of Memorial High School. And of course, I'm a two thousand five graduate of Memorial High School as well. Uh, we wanted to, uh, I've sent this to Dr. Porter and, uh, the trustees have this now. Our senior band students have done something truly amazing. Uh, every year, we are honored to have our students really push themselves and try to strive to not only represent our band in the best light possible, but also to push themselves to earn college scholarships that can help them and their families in their pursuit on the next level of education. Uh, these students, and I'm gonna let them introduce themselves shortly, have really raised the bar. And we set a challenge to them last year that, uh, we didn't just want to be the best in the area. We wanted to be recognized as one of the best in the state. And they have really taken that mark off and we're so proud of them. Uh, I'm gonna ask that those students at this time, when you will come and just introduce yourself and let us know what your plans are next year.
Good evening. My name is Casey Rendles. Um, I plan on attending Southern University A and M College in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. And I plan on attending our advanced scholarship. And I want to major in nursing and become a pediatric nurse.
My name is Jaylee Snagas. I am attending my, uh, further degree of education at Texas Southern University. I will be majoring in antech piloti and I'll be the first Caucasian to be little to twelve-four in J C U.
Good evening. I'm Amari Valar. I will be attending University of North Texas to major in accounting and hope to be a finer to advise.
Hello again. My name is Damian Roxton II and I'll be attending the University of Texas at Austin. And I'll also be auditioning for their band.
Good evening. My name is Alondra Gaylows. I'll be attending Loyola University and I'll be majoring in business.
Hello. My name is Janisha Addison. I'll be attending Southern University A and M College in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. And I'll be studying psychology.
Good evening. My name is John. I'll be attending Texas Southern University. I'll be majoring in music education.
As you can see, all of our seniors are headed to the collegiate level and we're so proud of them. Uh, anytime, uh, that we want to present them, it's Mr. Frazier trying to bring our trophies. And these are physical representation of the work that they put in. Just these trophies are what they've done in the last four years. From the time that they've been freshman until their senior year this year, even including the halted year of COVID. Uh, this is what they've helped our band program achieve. Uh, every time that we put on the uniform, every time that we represent, we get a chance to represent our community, our schools, and of course their families. And they have done it with, uh, a level of pride and dedication that I'm proud of. And it's bittersweet to see them go, but always great to know that what they've achieved here has helped them, helped, uh, propelled them to their next step. So for music to be able to be a liable, a viable step for them to take, it makes us so happy. And I hear Johnson, he wants to do music education. He can tell me that before. And we may have another person taking somebody else's job one day. Uh, so we're so proud and we thank you. None of this is possible without the support of our community, without the support of our trustees, without the support of Dr. Porter. Dr. Porter, I hope he doesn't get upset when we tell him this, but I, I called him around December and I said, "Dr. Porter, we got invited to this big battle of bands in Dallas and you've been taking school buses everywhere. And could we get some tour buses?" And he said, "Send me a quote." And that directly led, if you look on that paper, you'll see Langston University. And the director saw them perform and before we could even get back on the bus, he said, "Uh, why don't we have any people from Port Arthur, our band?" And I said, "You tell him." And he said, "I would love to come down and audition your students." And he did. And they actually offered some of the richest offers that our students got. So every time that our students get to perform away from home and they get to represent, uh, for our school and our community, they're not just winning trophies of metal and plastic. They're gaining opportunities for themselves and for those underclassmen who are under them. And so we thank you for your support and we look to be bigger and better in the future. Thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Frazier, I have to say, I'm extremely proud of you. You know, just almost twenty years ago, you stood where these group of students are standing. I'm equally proud of them and the work that you've done. Congratulations to you all. This is a lot of money here, so good luck to y'all. God bless you and we are extremely proud of you.
I just wanted to say, congratulations to each and every one of you all. The band has always been a core producer, especially at our district. I would always sneak out of theater arts practice just to sit by the band, just to hear you all play and sneak a record. So I can just sit at home and dance and shower. But this is why we do what we do, because you all continue to produce. And also, don't downplay yourself because each and every year you come back and save medals from U I L. Each and every single year, I think that's the year that you haven't came home with something. So congratulations and keep up the amazing work. And show them what we produce at PA ISD. When you go to TSU, Langston, UT, wherever you go, show up and show out. We are PA ISD proud of you all.
Uh, Mr. Frazier, we know that the work that you do is tiresome. We know that, you know, that the band is your love, first love. We went to school together, so I understand how it is when it comes down to band. Uh, Miss, Miss Dana, we might have to look for some money to give a band to, to build a trophy room. Because they, they're gaining trophies and stuff all coming everywhere and I know you need somewhere to put them. But we're gonna congratulate you all. Uh, thank you. And this, this is for me. This, this is always for me. I think Miss Johnson, Miss Johnson probably do the same, say the same thing. But, uh, band, I know y'all probably do this. But can y'all bring back, uh, football season, "Poke's be there"? That's a good song that we love to hear. But thank you all. Continue doing what you're doing. And like, uh, I, I said, y'all go get that money because it's out there for you. And y'all, it's shown on this piece of paper that what y'all can do. Y'all do a great job. Continue. And I wish y'all the best of luck on the next level.
Thank you. We thank you. We know our students are, are busy and things are going on. So if you have to be, uh, looking for options, we are busy. We got things. We're trying to get you. So make sure to settle. So we, we thank you for coming. And if you want to stay for the rest, we're definitely happy. If not, we'll help you. Uh, I'm also gonna ask, um, this lot to present.
This, uh, senior quarter is from twenty-eight to May sixteen, which is today after our last school board meeting up until today. For the month of May, we have added more than eighteen celebrations and observations, uh, including Asian American Pacific Holiday Month, Manicure and Speech Month. We will be celebrating Quarter Day. We have National School Communicator, Communicators Day. We celebrated Nurse, National Nurses Week and School Nurse Day. We have recognized and celebrated our teachers and rookies of the year for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. We had several single and manual celebrations across the district, the majority of our campuses. For the first time this year, we actually had National Testing Corps of Makers Day. Uh, our seniors have gone to one. May is also National Military, uh, Appreciation Month. And we've had several different types of college signing days as well as school lunch hero days. Oh, and I cannot forget Teacher Appreciation Week. We actually celebrated two weeks in a row of teacher appreciation. Uh, we've had over fourteen newspaper articles and mentions and some of our, our computer, uh, articles are here. We had a feature on our middle school year of program, which exposes our middle school students to college and career readiness on the middle school level. There was a community day under the pavilion at the end of April that was a successful turnout despite the cool weather. Whether one of our TJ and his, um, robotics team members was featured in the Port Arthur News for their Bright Teachers feature. Uh, his name is Mason Dixon. TJ also had a Monarch Butterfly talent tech ribbon cutting on last week and a Monarch Butterfly festival. So that was a big deal and they had a really good turnout at the campus for those events. And one of our former, uh, actually he's graduated in twenty twenty-two. Amari Abrams is, uh, transferring from Ole Miss to Georgia Tech to continue his academic and athletic career. We had, uh, six YouTube video clips and one television news air segment on the Monarch Festival on Channel Twelve. We live streamed our Retirement and Service Awards banquet and also our Teacher and Rookie of the Year breakfast. Several of our campus single and manual programs were live streamed. Those that weren't live streamed were still available, were put back from regular recordings. So all of those videos can be found on our YouTube channel. Our social media summary for the last month, we have had, we have reached an average of eighty-six thousand viewers, which is up sixty percent from our last school board meeting. And viewers are basically the people who scroll through our Facebook timeline. We have engaged an average of eighty-nine thousand viewers, which is up sixty-five percent. And when we say engage, we mean the people who actually flip through the photos and like or comment on what we post on social media. Um, as of today, our most viewed posts are our Rookie of the Year visual, which was seen by over eleven thousand people. Uh, the article about Amari Abrams transferring has, uh, been seen by all twelve thousand. And twelve point seven thousand people have viewed our photo gallery from last Friday at Wilson Early College. They had a senior stroll and they took their, uh, senior class panoramic picture on the steps of the campus. Our latest alumni spotlight is, uh, Carol Allen, who is an educator. She started off in PA ISD, but she's now in BISD. And she, uh, also is a photographer. So this spotlight, when we do alumni spotlights, we want to know what schools the alumni attended in PA ISD, what certificates and degrees they currently hold and from where. We want to know, um, what they feel was the best part about growing up in PA ISD. And if they have words of wisdom for our current students. And we also give their career highlights. So we solicit these from the public. Any alumni is welcome to fill out the form because we love to show what success our alumni is having in present day. We have a new incentive program that we are starting this summer. We will be offering, uh, current certified teachers from this school year who will also be returning for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to get paid to earn their ESL certification. They are required to attend two mandatory sessions to prepare for the ESL certification test. Take the exam at LeMoyne State College, Port Arthur. And once they pass and receive their certification, they will be reimbursed for their tax fee and they will earn just five hundred dollars. Our goal is for all of our teachers in PA ISD to be ESL certified. So we are looking at this as a motivator to make that happen. These are some pictures from our Teacher and Rookie of the Year breakfast. We have Alexandra Weber, who are Port Arthur, I'm sorry, from Port Davis Elementary. She is our district-wide elementary teacher of the year. And Alejandro Juarez, who is a PA ISD alumni. He is our secondary teacher of the year. He teaches auto mechanics at the K Building. And he was a auto mechanic student when he was a Stillwell campus. So this, this was a full circle moment for him. And both of these teachers can now apply to be, uh, named the Region Five Teacher of the Year. And this picture on my right is of our celebration for Nurses Week. Our, Dr. Jones, our Student Support Services Supervisor, honored all of the district nurses with a grab and go breakfast and a gift. Uh, like Dr. Porter mentioned, the spring showcase was a huge success. Our seniors had their senior prom and this is our prom queen, who is a Memorial High School student. And our Mr. Personality Prom King is a Wilson Early College student. And we also are promoting our summer band camp, uh, that is happening this July. At the bottom, this is our banner poster that's on our Facebook that shows all of the unsavableies at the high school. We've had several different types of signing days this year. At the top, three pictures are Academic College Signing Day, where the students have chosen what college they will attend. So that was a formal program at the high school that parents went back to, um, and, uh, they signed, took photos and announced where the kids would be further in their education. The picture on the right, um, we had a military signing day on yesterday at the high school. So many of our NJ ROTC seniors, uh, committed to branches of the military. And Sky Brooks has committed to the Navy and she earned a two hundred thousand dollar scholarship from the Navy. Uh, we also, at the bottom left, we have scholarships, uh, presentations to our special education students. And they were also, um, gifted college, uh, gift baskets with items for their dorm. And we have awards program for our licensed students, seniors as well. When the band director discussed the scholarship offers and the college acceptance for the seniors, the band students have been offered over a million dollars in scholarships and they have been accepted into dozens of colleges and universities. So on our Facebook timeline, there are several visuals that list, one, like for example, this John Rachel, there's a visual that lists all of the colleges that he was accepted to. And then there's also the visual that lists all of the scholarship offers that he received. So all of the seniors have those same individual visuals on our social media. Two of our Lady Titan, um, basketball players committed to Texas College in Tyler, Texas. So there was a signing day event for those ladies. The bottom right corner, my right, uh, is the culmination ceremony from the Motiva Inspired Capstone Program, where they were, um, gifted by their mentors for this project that they have been working on with Motiva in, uh, partnership with Motiva for the last few years of their high school careers. Our Lady Titan softball team attended the TSU versus Gremlin softball game. So they were able to see what college softball is like and network with the college softball players. To my right, we have several of our soccer players, uh, Lady Titan soccer players, who were named to our district teams. And there are also two honorable mentions whose, um, photos aren't there, but they are on our social media. To my bottom left, um, everyone knows Keandre Jones. Keandre, uh, was our state champ last year for the high jump. This year was his first time ever competing in the long jump. And he made it to state and came in fourth place in state. And this is his first time ever doing long jump. So he is like the athletic anomaly. And then our robotics team competed at, on the state level for the best school. We are in, uh, field day and field trip season. So several of our campuses have taken, like our AR students have been, uh, taking field trips to main event. Uh, we've had some students visit the Museum of the Gulf Coast, the Bowlin Alley. Our second grade students at Booker T. Washington are currently in their second week of a two-week, um, workshop or sessions on water safety. They go Monday through Thursday from ten thirty to twelve thirty to the YMCA to learn how to swim and learn water safety. So they will be at the theater in the session, um, like a program this Thursday. And at the, my bottom right, our robotics, middle school robotics team was invited to Motiva so that Motiva could introduce their new robots. But our students were also given the opportunity to show Motiva the robots. But our students were also given the opportunity to show Motiva the robots that they showed us at the last school board meeting. And Motiva fed them so they were able to network with those Motiva employees to see where their future career could be if they choose to continue their robotics. And of course, we are proud of our graduating class from Wilson Early College. This is the largest class to date. We have, La Mar State College has two different links. One has a link to over 500 photos from the graduation last Friday. And then they also have a link to their selfie booth, where our students, you know, they do all the little fun poses on the selfie platform. The top right corner, all of the seniors created these visuals to let you know what colleges they were accepted to and what their philosophy is and what their career goals are. And as far as community engagement is concerned, Justice of Peace Hillary is offering our seniors the opportunity to take photos in his courtroom. If we have any future lawyers or future justices of peace or judges or anybody going into political science, he's offering that opportunity. Sam Houston and Travis Elementary both had P A I S D student registration festivals at their campuses. My bottom left, Legacy Community Development Corporation hosted a youth financial literacy camp where several of our students attended and this is an ongoing thing, where they will have sessions around the city on Saturday mornings to teach our kids about how to be financially responsible and plan for their financial success in the future. And then Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated had a huge community giveaway at our Tops Jefferson Gym. They gave toiletries and hygiene products and it was a huge success. And we had, you know, a lot of the Delta, our former educators, current educators. So it was a really good turnout for them to give back to the community.
As you can see, we're not just sitting around doing nothing. And it's been much, much fun. Yes, a lot of fun.
Mr. Barti, board members. I'm not even learning the protocol and the process to being learned curve. But I can't help but share with, consistent with what you just reported. You all may already know that Porter knows. Three of our five scholarship honorees were awarded from the London Black Men's Parade Bowl, which is a mental organization. Three out of five were from Wilson Early College, current college high school. One of whom is here a minute ago, Andrea Saro, Jennifer Skidman, and Sonae Jones. Three out of the five in bowl. So just thought that would be something that maybe a good idea to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Porter, for the staff report. We're going to move on to minutes. Consider and enforce the proof of minutes of the April 27, 2023 regular board meeting. Have a motion. I have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose, second by vice president Lofton. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion passed. Assistant Attorney. The following items, which are my routine and recurring nature, have been designated as intended items by the board president per policy be local. All the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by trustee. In which event, the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the item is not requested. A separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees, I'll give you a minute to do, consent to the items, one through seventeen.
Mr. President, I would like to pass to item number eleven.
Item number eleven. I'd like to get a motion to pass to the justice of the items, number one through ten, twelve through seventeen. I have a motion on the floor by vice president Lofton, second by secretary Johnson. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries, Mrs. Ambrose.
Mr. President, just some clarity on item number eleven. Dr. Porter, are we still practicing in accordance with the CDC guidelines uncovered? And if so, in this amount that we're asking to approve, does that include those amounts for cleaning, sterilizing, considering any?
Yes, it is. It is of this tools and to answer your question. We will forever clean and try to keep it as sanitary, as sanitary and as safe as possible. We understand that COVID is a multi-pandemic song. However, we still deal with 8,000 students and 1,300 employees every day. So we must keep our facilities as clean as possible. So we can't say that we're ever going to be too clean. So right now, we're finishing adding and buying lots of roses and salts to make sure that we're ready for the 23-24 school year.
And that was actually my next question. So this is actually part of the technology?
Well, we're purchasing it now and we're going to take, we purchase all of them all because it's ongoing to, these are the bigger items that we keep right now. Our vacuum cleaners want to hack the soap that's in the restaurants. We try to put the soap in the restaurants with our kids. They do other things to prevent it from falling off the wall. We continue to do what we can to keep everybody safe.
I have a motion for, considering to item number seven. Second. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Personnel, Dr. Porter.
Before we start the personnel, I do want to pay attention. We have two of our principals here tonight, so we're excited. They have Mr. Washington, Mr. Baptiste, and Mr. Fulton that are here tonight with us. And before, we want to definitely give Mr. Fulton a huge thank you. Mr. Fulton is the interim principal of Memorial High School. And we want to thank him for taking that role. It was quite undertaken. Memorial is the only high school that we have and it takes a lot to run that high school. Mr. Fulton has been in good spirits since he took it. He's still smiling, so we appreciate everything that you've done in this school. Hi, board members, president Barti, board members. I am asking that you approve the employment of teachers for our district.
We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Ambrose, second by vice president Lofton, for the appointment of teachers. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries, Dr. Porter.
President Barti, board members. I am asking for the approval for the principal of Memorial High School, Dr. Jeremy Small.
We have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose, the second. Second by secretary Johnson. At this time, Mrs. LeBlanc, you want to do a roll call vote on that, please?
Trustee Ambrose, present. Yes.
Aye, yes. Yes.
Trustee, yes.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Let's reflect that the eyes and the, Dr. Brown, sorry, Dr. Brown. Yes, motion passes. Dr. Porter.
Next, I am asking for the employment of assistant principal for Thomas James Middle School, Dr. Anastasia Mackey.
Well, a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose and second by secretary Johnson. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, President Barti and board members. As we move forward, we have discussed and there will be other changes in the district in order to meet the needs of our students for the 23-24 school year. Today, the K E E director will be vacated and it will be posted as of tonight. Also, everyone else stays in place. We will have three assistant principal vacancies at the high school in which we will assign. For Lincoln Middle School, Dr. Glenn Mitchell will be on-site support for La Mar State College, Port Arthur. The interim principal for Lincoln Middle School will be Mr. Trent Johnson. Assistant principals, Ms. Carlisha Roberts will remain. And we are talking to others to take the other positions for assistant principal. I definitely want to thank everyone that has been in the conversation and the talks of how we move forward. As we move forward, there are other individuals that will assume other duties we are putting together and I have been working on the organizational chart as I've told us, I've talked to you over the past month or so. And I definitely want to thank Dr. Getwood, Dr. Vine, Dr. Kelsey, Ms. James, all of our directors that are here, Mr. Bible, who has really helped me to move forward in trying to make sure that we are covered. There's a lot going on and I do want to give kudos for the work that you all have done as we move forward. Immediately, beginning immediately, Dr. Tatiana Kelsey and Dr. Kim Vine will assume the position of assistant superintendent. I will get with them on their duties as we move forward. That concludes personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. At this time, we have information, Dr. Porter.
Ninety-five. Let's see, for average day enrollment by month, 8,165. Average daily attendance by month, 92.4.
Dr. Porter, where are we at this time right now as opposed to where we were a year ago?
In reference to?
The COVID number of students that we?
Well, we, well, right now, every now and then we come up with a COVID case. But it's nowhere near what we had. We are cleaning. And I, you know what I'm going to say is I think people are getting sick, yes. It's not COVID. Yes, I hope not. So we hope not, but we're good. We're not missing nearly the dates and the times that we had due to COVID. So we're just, we're always cautious.
Would you agree with the report that states we are considered in early danger at this point? Would you root that on a very solid issue?
I am in support of what the CDC says. So that's what we are.
And at this time, we got the call, generally, this meeting at 7:56. So it's been second and moved and we are dismissed. Thank you.